All right, let's call this meeting of the Marion County Board of Supervisors. Your reporter, Jake.
All right, Keisha Johnner.
Here.
Mark Ramey.
Here.
Steve McCombs.
Here.
Would entertain a motion on this morning's agenda.
Make motion to approve today's agenda.
Second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
Communications, Jake, anything for your, your office? Board.
Nope, I have none.
All right, the only thing I have is we have received the appraisal on the laundry building that we asked for, so I'm gonna pass that on down and y'all take a look at that. At your leisure, it's exciting reading. All right. Public comments, it's the portion of the agenda public can speak on items not listed on this morning's agenda. The board cannot act on those items, they could be topics for future meetings. Are there any public comments in the online? Anything in the room? Seeing none, we'll move on. Is there a motion for the consent agenda this morning?
Yeah, I make motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
All right, on the business, first one is, uh, first item is a, uh, class C retail alcohol license for Melinda Nunnikoven, Nunnikoven Farms.
She on? This just is coming through alcoholic beverages, she's done everything on the county side that's necessary. I know, um, speaking with her on the phone, she's, uh, dealt with all the different licensing and things like that, she was maybe gonna be here or maybe online, it's a one day event, I believe, it's this Saturday at the Nunnikoven Farm, and they're very excited about it and hoping for very good weather.
Okay, excellent. All right, very good. Excellent, all right, very good, is there a motion?
Make motion to approve the class C retail alcohol license.
Second.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye. Very good, we have another special class C retail wine renewal, uh, for, and including living do- living quarters and outdoor service, uh, for Ronald, is it Vandalun?
It's Vandalun.
Vandalun?
Yep.
Uh, operating as Thunder Creek Winery in Pella.
Yep, uh, again, I'll, I don't, I doubt Ron's on, um, this is just a renewal, uh, for many years, it's, uh, um, on his home place there, I fulfilled all the requirements administratively through alcoholic beverages and through me, and I don't believe we've had anybody indicate any issues, so it's just a renewal.
Is there a motion, board?
I make a motion, we approve the special class C retail wine renewal.
Second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
All right. Marion County Courthouse Grounds Special Event Application for Thrive, it's our annual living windows application. We've got everything here in your packet.
Yeah, I don't, I, no, cause, I mean, I don't believe, I don't know that anybody's on, there's nobody here, I think, representing it, um, maybe Tyler.
Tyler is reluctantly coming to the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm on Thrive, not on the committee for living windows, but I was copied on it, everything's the same as has been, similar to last year, last year was slightly different, I think, there will be early set up, you know, ahead of the date for the tree and the Christmas lights, um, but everything else is the same.
Okay, Chris, Chris texted me, said he has no issues, so. I don't think there's anything else we need to.
Is this the one that, uh, needs inside the courthouse or not?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so that's unique for most of them, so that will have to be arranged.
Board?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any problem with it, Chris reached out to me, it's fine.
No, I'm good with it.
Right, is there a motion?
Make motion to approve the Marion County, uh, special application for Thrive Knoxville living windows.
Second.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Next, uh, the Chuck Leasy Memorial Bench Request. We had Mike ride an hour here, uh, I think two meetings ago, uh, to talk about that, I think Mike is online, if we'd have questions, board, have a chance to give this some thought? Open the floor.
I have, you know, and, you know, I'm very respectful of what Chuck has done for the city of Knoxville, uh, my only concerns are, when do we say no to some of these requests to place things on the courthouse grounds? Uh, in my opinion, I believe a more appropriate relocation would probably be on city property somewhere, like say the library or, or park or something like that, because sooner or later, we're gonna, we're gonna have to say no to some of these requests, or we're gonna have, the courthouse lawn's gonna be so cluttered, we won't be able to maintain it. I mean, that's my opinion, I mean, I'm very respectful of what Chuck has done, it's just a, I really need to look at it really hard, and I think a more appropriate place would be on city property.
Thanks, Steve.
Keisha.
I also know that, you know, currently, the ones that are honored, um, that we have done for like a bench or a plaque, have been, um, employees that were working for us, that suddenly, you know, we lost them, so we were trying to honor them. I do also, uh, kind of believe what Steve does is that this is more of a, maybe a city or the organization in which he was within, uh, maybe honoring, honoring him there versus a county, um, on county property. I think that we have to think about, when we do open it up, uh, to something that's outside of, um, our employees or those that, um, were military, we know we have some military, uh, plaques on our lawn also, so, at this point, I'm not interested in placing it, I just, I would, uh, Chuck was a great, um, asset, um, to Knoxville, it's gonna be a, it's a deep loss, and, uh, what he did for the community, um, was outstanding, and, uh, I just ask that maybe the family does reach out to the city or, um, see what they can do there, or an organization in which he was part of.
All right, very good. Sounds like we have a consensus on this, um, and, uh, we don't really need to take any action, we just let it die for lack of a, of a motion to proceed. So is there a motion to close discussion?
I make motion to close discussion.
Second.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye. Very good. Thank you, next one, Marion County Information Technology Department. Yeah, I don't know who's, who's taking the lead on this one.
Um, I'll take lead on it, that's fine, so, I had, uh, reached out, um, and finding out that, uh, we are going to be, uh, having a new IT person start, um, next month, it'll be later next month, and we are excited about that, but, one of the things that we had discussed, uh, when, um, the loss of our IT director, that we put in place, Andrew DeHahn, which was our former IT director, I, not for sure, and I'd have to go back and see if the minutes, if the minutes, uh, put him at a certain window, but I just wanted the board to be able to talk about, do we wanna extend that or just not put a timeframe on that at right now, until we can make sure everybody is, um, uh, the new person is up and going and doing well, um, in the future, so.
So Keisha, are you suggesting to extend DeHahn's consulting contract?
Right, and I, my understanding is, is I don't know that it's on a contract per basis, I think, uh, he is, um, employee, but it would be something, I, I kinda consider this as, uh, I'm gonna use Tyler's example, you know, when you hire somebody for summer employment, you know, we do a window, you know, or did we consider a window, was it 90 days, I think we talked about maybe 90 days at one time, and we are well past that 90 days, so I just thought maybe we need to do an extension.
Is Lisa online? Lisa, do you remember what the duration of this temporary employment arrangement was? Very good. Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Steve, any thoughts?
What, he was hired, what?
Sixty days.
Sixty days, okay, but I think he's willing to extend that if need be. Uh, it, I mean, that's what I under- my understanding was.
What was that? Lisa?
I'm trying.
I don't know that we. Yeah, I don't, if, if there is a concern on transition, which that's what sounds like you're bringing up, Keisha.
Yes.
As the new guy comes on, uh, I think he's going through the, the pre-employment process right now, and we still need support for the current IT platform, extending that temporary employment arrangement another 30 days can't hurt us. At all, just provides redundancy until.
And I think we're on.
New person comes onboard.
Right, I, I'm, I'm almost thinking, um, it's probably gonna have to be longer than 30 days, just because by the time within 30 days, uh, we'd just be, he'd just be starting.
Just revisit in 30 days.
So, um, you know, and that's.
That way you're not locked in.
So, um, okay, and that's, that's just something that, yeah, we'll probably do that, and then the other thing that, um, I wanted to speak about is, uh, we had given, um, Nicole a one time bonus on June 28th, um, for what she's done, that too, we were hoping that we were going to be able to fulfill the seat within 90 days, I wanted, Nicole has been gracious, um, she has stepped in in the time of need, and I wanted the board to be able to discuss if we wanna, um, since she is well past the 90 days, we would like to give her a little bit more, um, for what she's done.
Well, okay, so first, let's take a step back, Steve, how do you feel about an extension for Andrew's temporary arrangement?
Oh, I'm fine with the extension if he's willing to do it.
Okay, so.
If he is willing, I did reach out to Andrew.
So do we have a motion to extend the temporary arrangement by, I would suggest 30 days, you come back and revisit it, that you can pick whatever timeframe you want, I don't care?
I would like at least 60 days, and then come back and visit it, just because of the transitioning and when the start date is for the new person.
Yeah, that is, is toward the end of October, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I'm fine with the 60 day extension also.
All right, is there a motion? Uh, Jason?
Just a question, so when is the IT director starting, or the new one starting, is that?
October.
Yeah, the end of, toward the end of October.
Okay, and, and they couldn't start any sooner than that, or what was, I guess?
Gotta go through the pre-employment stuff and.
Okay.
Background checks, and all that type of thing.
Okay.
Yeah, I made a motion, I don't know, I don't know whether to call it a contract or not.
Just to call the temporary employment.
Yeah, the temporary, I, I moved that we, uh, extend Andrew DeHahn's temporary employment for 60 days during the transition.
I'll second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Sure.
Johnner.
Aye.
All right, and now Keisha's second item was, for this, for this agenda?
Yeah, um, is regarding Nicole, and I wanted the board to discuss if we wanted to, um, give her, uh, a little bit more of a bonus in regarding what she has done, um, I did speak with Nicole, seeing if she, I don't know if she's on, um, she was helping at the courthouse, they have an event going on this morning, um, that she had to be there, and, uh, I believe it was to deal with Jake's office, so.
So we, did we already give her some money?
We did, we give her, um, 3,000 on 6/28, um, she was approved a one time bonus then, um, we were hoping at that time we were going to be able to fulfill the position and have somebody started within 90 days, it's now by the time said person is hired, and then she's also going to have to help and train, um, so, we're gonna be looking into minimum of five months, if not six months.
What number are you looking at?
Well, I figure if we did roughly a thousand dollars a month, um, for the 90 days, that was, I mean, the 3,000, I mean, whether we do another, you know, couple thousand for the five months, I, I mean, I'm open, I just think that it'd be nice that we discussed it.
Steve?
Yeah, I, she, she has taken on quite a role, and I, and I appreciate what she's done, and, and I, I have, I have no problem with, you know, given, uh, given another thousand dollars a month to get us through this transition, I have no problem with that.
So are you saying for, cause she's, she's done, but it's all said and done, it's gonna be, by the time he starts, it'll be five months that she's been doing the position, um, she's also going to have to help train him, so, I mean, are you thinking a 2,000, 3,000? What are you thinking?
Well, I'm thinking the 2,000, if we didn't a thousand, you know, what, what we agreed all originally, so.
Okay.
I'm okay with the 2,000.
I'm fine with that also.
Is there a motion to add another 2,000 dollars for Nicole's work for the next several months?
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Um, McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
No.
Johnner.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-83, establishing a county compensation board, it's got this one, oh, looks like Keisha does, all right, Keisha, what do you got?
Yeah, we had discussed last meeting and regarding, uh, the county compensation board, and we kind of had, um, you know, discussing, I thought it was a very good discussion about, uh, you know, whether to have the compensation board reinstated, because, uh, as of July 1st, um, the compensation board had been, um, dissolved, and I am at the point where I do think that, um, going this year, and it doesn't, this resolution is, is something that, you know, we, if we do, do choose to pass this, that in the future, we can choose to go another direction, it doesn't mean that it's always in effect, um, we can revisit it as a board, um, so, I don't know if that makes sense to all of you, but, if you put the resolution in place, the resolution is in place, but then we can revisit it and have it disband if we wanted to in the future.
The resolution to reinstate the compensation?
Right, yep, this is, this is what that would, um, would do, uh, I think that when reading the code, it is very clear that, um, it's going to put a lot of work on us as supervisors to be able to find these comparables, and these comparables, not only for the sheriff, but for the other electeds, now go outside, um, of just the county government, and I think, uh, to find all that is going to be very difficult for us.
Well, you know, I stated in the past that, I, I didn't have a real problem with the compensation board per se, I was, my problem was with the way the process was structured, and they've changed the process, am I correct?
Yes, they did change the process in which now you do not have to reduce by like, um, amount, so, you not have to go in and do, if you wanted to cut it by a quarter, you know, it cuts everybody, now you can, as the board, if the recommendation, um, is, if the resolution is passed, and the compensation board, uh, meets and gives the recommendation, then it's a recommendation back to us, and then we can take it per elected, yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion, uh, we approve resolution 2024-83, uh, reinstating the compensation board.
I'll second.
Ramey.
No.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
All right, class C alcohol license, outdoor service for Wackos.
I can take this one again, uh, he's very interested, this is the new on, new operator, individual that is operating the Wackos that recently opened, um, he had a limited alcohol permit, I think it was beer and wine only, and he, um, it's unusual to bring one back this quickly, but he, um, wanted to go full class C retail, so that's why he's bringing it, he has followed everything through alcoholic beverages, got his ram shop, um, so he's just anxious, uh, to move forward with this and excited about what's happening out there, so.
All right. We got some sign off from Kim and Public, and Public Health, Lindsay. Apparently there's an outstanding, uh, septic issue.
So, in my view of health, I feel like actually it contains a violation, but the septic does need some work, so the staff at Wackos is working with environmental help to get that taken care of, so as long as they continue to work together, which they're doing, there's no reason to pull anything up.
Yeah, all right, Jason, anything?
No, I, no, no issues on the sheriff's office side of it, and also heard great things, so, um, it's a good addition to the community.
Okay, very good. All right, board, any discussion?
No.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the class C retail alcohol license for Wackos Vineyard and Grill.
I'll second.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye. 2482 supplemental ARPA funding request for Junction 92, Tyler?
Yeah, so I'm before you today requesting, uh, use of a, some of the undesignated and interest earned from the ARPA funds that were received, uh, by December of this year, the funds have to be obligated per the, per the requirements, um, and during our, or throughout the time that the treasurer's office has been holding these funds, there's been some substantial interest earned, and, uh, I think that's nearly 244,000 dollars of interest earned, so I am requesting 300,000, uh, additional ARPA funds for our Junction 92 project, uh, the bids came in higher than our, uh, original estimate for the main shop, we did, we've done the value engineering, uh, proposals to try to reduce that cost, which you approved via the change orders one and two in a previous meeting, however, we're still above that original estimated cost, still below our ultimate, you know, still within our contingency budget, um, however, we're really early in the stages of construction, and if we're able to utilize ARPA funds, uh, and we don't come in over budget or come in under budget, that will free up either secondary road funds or general fund dollars that you've also allocated, so we wouldn't have to utilize one or, or both of those sources, uh, to the fullest extent that you've approved, um, that would be kind of a decision, a future decision, um, of yours, if, I guess depending on the order of preference of the funding that we use. Now, uh, Jake and I had the discussion, uh, about the ARPA funds, so, and he concurred with the balances that I've reviewed, I've reviewed those with the auditor's office, uh, the interest with the treasurer's office, I've talked to Chris, because he was heavily involved in a lot of these projects that were allocated to ARPA funds, so with the, so by my numbers, I sent you a spreadsheet showing, there's roughly 407,000 dollars of ARPA funds to date that would be available for use, some of that was undesigned from the get go, so there have been multiple resolutions, you've approved allocating ARPA funds, there was 100,000, uh, of a previous project that I'm being told wasn't, is not going to move forward, and then there were 75,000 of undesigned funds, plus the interest earned, uh, there was some slight overages on some of the projects that have been allocated in 11,800 dollars, uh, so the net of that is 407,000, and I'm requesting 300 of that 407, um, to Jake's comment, uh, we have to decide how your, if you approve this, how we would allocate the funds, you know, so by December, we would have to allocate the ori- so many dollars, what was the original, 6.4 million, we would have to allocate that towards projects, so are we doing a part of this or all of this, and, so, so there, there may be discussion there, but.
Jake, here's how I have to think about it in my mind, if that's okay with you guys, um, there's two different, I always have to put things in buckets, or, or separate lanes, so, there was an original ARPA allocation, and then there's what you guys have been obligating along the way, and then there's, um, some additional funds that are available due to the treasurer's office work on, and, um, you know, having a large sum of money for a while, gaining interest, so here's how I think, have to think about this, is, when we look back at the original list of projects per ARPA that was created, and we've been ongoing, passing resolutions for what has been obligated, and I wanna focus on, and I'm not trying to get in Tyler's game here, but this is how it fits in my head, is, um, we had our, uh, original allotment of money, and you guys by board resolution have allotted for all but about 175,005 dollars, there's a, more funds available than that now due to this interest, all the other projects have, excuse me, so, the way I look at it is there was a disaster recovery project that was discussed very early in the, in the process, that has never been a resolution for or, or, or obligated, uh, I would think that, um, this resolution is setting a max not to spend of the, um, ARPA money that's available in the fund, but that would obligate this 100,000, uh, to Tyler, which leaves 75, and I, and I, and Jason has had several projects and has talked about that multiple times, so the remaining 75 could be obligated, could be obligated for another project, if it's, um, something at the LEC, so be it, and that would then fulfill our December 31, 2024 obligation deadline, because December 31 of 24 is obligated deadline, not spend deadline, we do have to do annual reports, um, so we would break, this request is a kind of a not to exceed for Tyler of the funds available, it would also obligate that 100,000, leaving that remaining 75 to be obligated in a future meeting through resolution. Does that help?
Yeah.
Makes sense to me.
I, yeah, I have to think about it too, there are things, the obligated portion and the funds that are available.
Jason?
I, uh, I love Tyler like a brother, and now as a brother coming to the parents on this side of it, I appreciate him coming out of the gate fast and first to jump on this and do that, and I think it's a wise strategy, but, I guess I would kinda look at, if there is money to be still allocated, do we do another thing for all the county offices on needs or wishes or things that they would have to request that ARPA funding or that money for projects that would be there, um, just to give options to the others, cause if, if Tyler grabs it, that's great, I mean, and I appreciate, i- if I was in Tyler's spot, I would probably be doing the same thing, I just don't know that there's not other departments that may want another chance to come ask for ARPA money for projects that they may have, so if you give it all to this project.
And I, and I think you need to understand that he's not, I mean, he's, he says in here, um, I've been there, I believe that there has been discussion amongst other departments about using 70 to 75, hence not requesting the full remaining balance.
No, I understand that, but asking for 300 of new money on different things, that's ARPA money, I mean, I, I said my.
So Jake, how is interest, so we're, we're calculating, now we're calculating interest off of ARPA?
How?
No, no, so how do we, uh, account for that to the feds, because we have to keep a record of that.
So, um, the feds, we, we only have to report once a year, and it has been a bit, but I believe that the only thing we have been reporting to the feds is the obligated amount and what we spent within that obligation, I do not believe that we have to turn in actually anything, this is, I haven't looked at it lately, but I don't believe that we have to actually, we, we weren't required to keep the interest in the ARPA fund, that was a local decision, so we don't, we're not reporting that extra amount, so I believe it's your decision, um, we have to report the initial amount we rega- we got was the 6,459,005 dollars, we are tracking that as obligation, and that's why we have 1,700, 75,005 unobligated, and what we're spending within that, each project that you guys have, that the board has approved, we tag a specific chart of account number two, and that's how we're tracking back for our things, so like, if this goes out there, um, so, I don't believe we have to mark the interest.
That, that's what I wanted to know.
That's the.
I mean, you're just gonna have to decide, it's, it's, the interest is due to the fact we received.
A large sum of money.
A large sum of money.
Didn't spend it right away.
But, is it ARPA money? Well, we're not tracking it as ARPA, we're tracking it as just interest, so, let's be clear to make those distinctions.
Marion County, we chose to, because we didn't know what the regulations were gonna be, kept, kept the, we had to keep the ARPA money separate.
Correct.
We kept the interest separate with that fund balancing, some counties put it straight to the general fund.
Right, right.
So that's why it's available.
But you're not, but you're not reporting that interest back to the feds.
Correct.
On a spend basis that we're allocating it to a project, so, all they're concerned about is the original tranche.
Yes, that's what is part of their report.
Yeah.
Our local process has been to maintain it within each project, like, the conservation project is still ongoing, that's, that's just how we've tried to maintain it for our reporting purposes and to keep it straight in our heads.
Right, okay, everybody understand that? All right, so, discussion?
Well, I've been involved in this project since 2004, we've been trying to get this project done since that time, and I, I believe it's going to be a very valuable asset to all citizens of Marion County, so, I'm willing to back the resolution.
Okay, Keisha?
Yeah, I, I think that, um, the way you presented it, Tyler, appreciate that, I do think, um, Jason, I think that you have spoke before about, uh, the LEC dispatch generators, or something, something going on there that you'd spoke about in the. uh the LEC dispatch generators or something, something going on there that you'd spoke about in the in the past? Okay, so I I think that if there is that need, then you need to go ahead and present.
Right, but I think we're talking above and beyond those discussions in my, unless I'm missing something. I mean.
Ja- Jason's saying there's extra money available and it's a sizable sum and it's interest related to this.
Yes, and Tyler, Tyler's going to present, he did a great job just presenting that. And if you would do that, I just think you should give the other, I mean, you should give Kale, the new director of County Conservation, an opportunity to present. If he has projects that he needs, if there's somebody else that has other projects, I just, I I'm not trying to put rain on Tyler's because it's a great presentation and it's a great deal, but if there's, if you're looking at new money to be, it's it's county money. And you're, you have to decide, and I'm not saying, Steve, it's not a great project. I'm just saying this money is above and beyond and you're approving money above and beyond what's already been approved for that project. So, I mean, as that goes through the process, I just, if there's another department head that had something and and obviously, yeah, I I don't want to lose out on the generator side of things that uh Chris and Troy have been working on and other projects. But I didn't know about this new sum of money. I didn't know that there was a new option to do that. And so now, if it's approved today, and and kudos to Tyler, I'm, I, it's great that he jumped on this and did this, but I think that there may be other department heads. I don't, I don't know if Michaela, I don't know if, I mean. I I know if there's somebody else that has projects that are out there, but if it's gone, once it's allocated here, that money's gone. I mean, and that's.
I would, I would just like to suggest though on the, you know, because we have been talking about the LEC portion of it. I do think that since we are coming down on a deadline here within, you know, uh December thirty-first, that we need to get it, if that's, that needs to be presented to us.
Okay.
I mean, honestly, I mean, I'm just trying, you know, so, because I, my my understanding was like seventy-five thousand, so.
I'm just gonna chime in with the conservation side of it. I mean, Jake said our cabins are still ongoing. It's my understanding from the previous director that it was gonna be a very tight budget.
Yeah, I I guess, you know, for what, for what it's worth, Jake, I I I don't have a problem allocating the specific ARPA funds and we have to do that by the deadline. That's just something we have to do. So we have to have a project assigned to those dollars. I do have a problem with with locking in interest that really isn't ARPA. I think that money should be left in the general fund and it should be part of normal budget discussions. And if there are cost overruns or things that we need to have contingencies for, those have to be part of an overall county budget discussion, along with the other departments. But that's not ARPA. That's interest. The feds don't account for it the same way. So you can hold that in just the general fund.
So Mark, what, since the total undesigned is one seventy-five, one oh five, um that's just undesigned. That doesn't include the interest if I'm reading that correctly. Then are you willing to take any of those funds and consider allocating?
Jake, is that what we have left that's undesigned?
Yeah.
It's one seventy-five?
Right. I believe that Tyler's in, well, I don't want to speak for Tyler.
So so to your point, Mark, what, where where's the interest being held?
In the ARPA fund.
And can it be moved to the general fund?
Um that's good, that's a good question.
That's why I just asked the question from an accounting standpoint.
Some counties did not keep the ARPA separate. They put it straight to the general fund from the go.
And the answer is yes, it can. We just chose not to.
I would think so.
But since we have put it there, it can be moved.
Yes.
I believe, I mean, anytime that a transfer takes place between the treasurer, uh between funds within the treasurer, it will have to come before the board. Just like we're, we'll do on some other.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna jump in here because we'll end up getting confused on just technicalities.
Right.
The ARPA money, the original amount allocated to Marion County, that money has to be designated by the date that Jake discussed.
Correct.
That original tranche, I think we got it, we got it in two segments.
Yep.
That has to be designated. Of that do- of that money, we have a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars remaining as undesigned dollars. That's it. The interest off of that money, that's just interest that's part of the Marion County budget. That's not ARPA or subject to ARPA designation. So and you'll have to decide what you want to do, but I don't think you lock those dollars in right now. I think you let that be part of a normal budgetary discussion that everybody takes us, hey, I've got issues too. I got things I have to talk about. Um so I don't have a problem with the one seventy-five if we need to designate that now and we need to allocate that to Junction Ninety-two. That's fine. But if we've got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of interest, give or take, that's a normal budget discussion. That involves other departments.
I don't think there's anything um requiring Michaela, I don't know if she's on or not, but I mean, that that the money could stay in that fund until it's decided.
Yeah, you don't have, you just have to, you have to understand how the dollars from a federal standpoint, how they're accounting for this. They're not accounting for interest because they didn't know that there would be, because interest rates changed after they gave us the ARPA money.
I think the intent of this three hundred at a minimum was for the hundred, uh the hundred that was undesigning that IT recovery.
And I have no, I have no problem if we want to allocate that to our, or to Junction Ninety-two.
Or or divided between the two.
Or close that however, however we want to do that. We need to designate that hundred seventy-five, no question. Has to be done.
I I do think that um the seventy-five uh we have spoke in the past and Jason, we just spoke about that. The seventy-five for the Law Enforcement Center um for the dispatch generator and such, okay? Uh and then there is the hundred thousand. Um yeah, I'm fine with just designating the hundred thousand and then knowing that in the future Tyler may be coming back um to us as the board and saying, um and others, that they're shortfall um with this project because we are paying this uh within our budget. This is not being bonded when we do Junction Ninety-two and so um we're just trying to be financially responsible, so. Yeah, I don't have a problem with just doing the hundred thousand now and then uh leaving seventy-five thousand in there. But knowing that.
Okay.
It's gotta be coming here, so.
So essentially, um resolution twenty tw- twenty-four dash eighty-two. This, I'm not making the motion, but could just be amended to one hundred thousand.
Correct.
Instead of three hundred.
Correct.
And that rest is not. And then if somebody, if Jason comes back at a future meeting for the seventy-five, it'll be essentially the same thing. And then there's still the interest that will be discussed at a later date.
Yes, and they just can be discussed, okay? Tyler, does that make sense?
Yep.
Steve, where are you at?
Well, that's making sense to me. Uh but the 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 interest then can be turned, it can be moved over to the general fund eventually, correct?
Think so.
And then we'll have the discussion again.
We can have the discussion if we need it, you know. My argument was we wouldn't have had that interest without the ARPA and let's reduce any potential expense to the general fund, which is available to use for any county department, which I don't typically get unless I'm up here petitioning to use the general fund.
Right.
Dollars, so.
Okay.
Which is fine.
But you can make that pitch.
Yeah. And we, like I said, we're still within our overall budget contingency. We're just on this one line item, we're still over budget and it's the very first line item we're doing out there, so.
Right.
Right.
So we need to have a motion to amend resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-two to the dollar amounts we've discussed. And so that would be a hundred thousand dollars allocated out of the ARPA fund. Is there a motion?
Yep, I'll make that motion.
Second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Ramey?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
All right, so that's amended. Well, now we have to pass it.
That's fine. We can do it in two.
Are you okay with that, Jake?
Yeah, it's within, it seems to be within the scope.
All right. That was my fault. We should have had amended and passed.
That's okay. So let's, before we move on then, because we basically changed the amount on the resolution, now let's have a motion to approve the resolution.
Well, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, sorry, let's do it in two.
I thought you were waving.
No, I think you're, I think it was amended. I I think we.
Now let's have a motion to pass the resolution as amended, yes, okay.
I don't think it hurts. Yep, it's better to do both than.
So you have lots of power, Jake. You can just tell me not to do that.
I was just trying to write.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four eighty-two as amended.
Okay. Second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Ramey?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
All right, very good. Thank you, Jake. All right, uh letter of support Asphalt Paving Association of Iowa.
Yeah, so Norris Asphalt Paving uh was the contractor on a few projects in, within Marion County during twenty twenty-four. And they've made a request to nominate uh Marion County for a quality design award for uh projects totaling over thirty thousand tons. We are at twenty-nine thousand some ton for the Highway G twenty-eight project, but you couple our G seventy-six shoulder paving and T fifteen shoulder paving project and that puts us over thirty thousand ton, which there are really few counties eligible for that um in any particular year. Uh so they have nominated us for the quality, twenty twenty-four quality design award through the Asphalt Paving Association of Iowa. As part of their application, um they need an endorsement or a letter of support from a citizen, the Board of Supervisors uh and the county engineer. So I've uh drafted my endorsement and I've also solicited a citizen from the Dutchman's Landing area that lives adjacent to Highway G twenty-eight um for that as well. And then this is my uh request for you, for the board to endorse or give a statement. And I drafted a version for you to review. Uh and look, I would appreciate your support for this award, which we would I think this would be the first time we've been nominated for such award in my ten years. Um we have received awards for various other projects in the past, however.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Tyler. Board, Steve?
No.
That's pretty nice.
Is there a motion?
Make motion. We um authorize the letter of support.
Second.
Ramey?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thanks, Tyler.
Updates, Steve?
I have none.
Keisha?
I have impact this week. None, nothing else.
Okay, nothing from me. All right. There a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Ramey?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Very good. Thank you.